I have a couple of suggestions up here. I just want to welcome you, thank you for participating in Paulding County Government. It's a pleasure to have everyone. Rebecca's gonna put on a song that's the year I graduated from high school. That's when it came out. It's called Smile On Your Brother. Mr. Crowe was in Vietnam at the time. Mr. Halep was in kindergarten. Mr. Palma was like second grade. The next guest is... The year I graduated from high school. So enjoy the video and the song.
Did not tell you.
Was that 1800s? Was it pretty serious?
And I heard your song in Vietnam, but I gotta get out of here.
You can dance it, Chris.
At least we have weed. Well, it is Valentine's Day. You're handing out candy. Come on, let's do it. Home people now. Smile on your brother. Everybody get together. Try to love one another right now. Home people now. Smile on your brother. Everybody get together. Try to love one another right now. Right now. Right now. Good job, girl.
Okay, who knows who, what bridge did that song?
That's one of them.
1969. We're around.
I wasn't ready to think that.
So I recall the February 14th Valentine's Day. We wanted Mr.'s meeting to order. And for recognizing elected officials. Help me out. Love you from here. Teresa. The line of school board. You're just too short, Teresa. Welcome everybody else. And thanks for joining in on that song. Also like to welcome Chris Harvey, who's here from the elections board, the state elections director. He's gonna give some comments to us later. So good to have you, Chris. I'd like to ask Detective Daniels if he will bring forth to the citizens, sign in sheet, please. Don't forget to turn off your phones. I'm gonna let Tony, he's got a special friend and person here, he's gonna get our meeting started off with an invocation and pledge.
I do have a special friend and a special person to meet. It's my pastor, Donald Shering. He's named after Donald Trump. He's not friends with that. At Legacy Baptist Church. From Donald, would you come forth this time and give our invocation? It don't look like much, but I'm here to tell you, it's a down by person.
I need a pledge first, right? Every time I get it backwards.
You suit yourself.
You want me to do the invocation first?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Happy Valentine's Day first. And I want to say this, you know, the Bible says, greater love hath no man than he that would lay down his life for his friend. And the fact that Jesus recalls his friend is amazing to me. So let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. And God, we thank you that your word tells us that you forgot to love the world, that he gave his only son, that who would ever believe that him would not die, but have everlasting life. God, we thank you for that. God, we thank you that you would lay down your life for us. And God, that you may love so simple for us, and salvation so simple, that if we would repent and believe, we could be saved. And God, we're grateful for it. God, I thank you for these men. I know them, God. I know that they are men of integrity. And God, I thank you for each of them. I thank you for Tony's friendship. God, not only inside the church, but outside, and what he means to me and my family, God. And I pray that you continue to bless him. Pray for David Carmichael. Lord, I appreciate him so much and his friendship. And God, to see the unity back in this room is amazing. And Lord, I thank you for that. I thank you for the smiles, the laughs, the joy that you could see amongst everyone here. God, we appreciate that. And God, we pray now that as they get ready to lead us and lead this board in this county for the next year, we pray that you grant them wisdom. And that you make them men of integrity and honor and discernment. And God, we pray that you grant them wisdom that would come from you. It's in Jesus' name that we pray.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, Rebecca. The January 24th, 2017 work session minutes and the January 24th, 2017 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Paulding segment this morning, we're gonna see what it's like to volunteer in animal control. So let's roll that.
This is Ally Holton, it's Paulding County Animal Control, and we speak to you about our volunteer program. If you're interested, must be 18 years or older. We have a volunteer packet that's come in and filled out. Actually, it's available on our website, paulding.gov. Just go into Animal Control Department, and you can form some documents and print that off and write it to us. If you're under 18 and want to come in, you must have a parent or guardian with you. So we choose those forms, fill out, and then you know that we love volunteers, come in, walk the animals, feed, pass out treats, come help with events. We love volunteers. Any questions on that, or anyone, is any questions for anyone that would love to come in and volunteer with us, give us a call, 770-445-1511.
All right, Ms. Ally Holton is a great director at Animal Control, and she works with the marshals and makes her a home, and I always thank them for all they do. I'd like to announce the prayer rally that's gonna be around the flagpole in a couple of days, on Thursday, February 16th at noon. So attend at 10:00. Now, it's a privilege to have the Director of Elections, Deidre Holden, our election supervisor, who will give an update on voter registration in Paulding. And also like, has already had to welcome Chris Harvey again, the Georgia State Elections Director. Thank you, Deidre.
Good morning. If it's okay with the commissioners, I would like to have my staff to come stand in front of you all. So I'll almost have to come up. And Mr. Harvey as well. You can stand right there.
Pass up a chance to stand next to her.
I was gonna say, nice looking.
I can't do it.
And Mr. Palma, are you the one who gave the roses this morning?
Will you be my Valentine?
I just want to say thank you, because you've won up to my husband. You're the only man who's given me flowers today.
It was kinda like school. I didn't have the nerve to go to you myself.
How precious. Okay, so I'm not here, I'm not the bearer of bad news today, so I'm excited about that. I want to tell you about what a wonderful staff that I have, because without these individuals up here, I would be absolutely nothing. So I'm gonna introduce you to this staff, because they are very special to me. And I'm telling you, if you worked in the election office, no two days are ever the same. We laugh, we cry, we get mad, we stomp our feet, we slam doors. We're just, you know, we're just who we are. But I will say this, I have the absolute best election staff in the state of Georgia, so I'm very proud of them. So I'm gonna start on that end. That is Ms. Lacy Baker-Dunn, who is my assistant election supervisor. She is the one who coordinates all of our voter registration cards that come in. And I wanna brag just a little bit, because it takes ability, we all have to do that. Lacy, Cherie, and Felicia, who you'll meet in just a few minutes, they're the ones who input all of that data. And when we ended the election in November, we had almost 9,000 cards that we had to keep. So they've done a great job, we're down to 1,900, so they've done a wonderful job, and they make sure they get those records in there correctly. Next is Cherie Hamilton, wave your hand, she's my chaperone. Cherie is my absentee ballot clerk. She and the beautiful lady beside her, Marcy Baker, whom I'm proud to say is my very best friend in this whole world. They are the ones who make sure all of our people that want to vote on paper get to vote on paper. They did a wonderful job this past November. We had over 4,000 ballots that went out, and they did a great job making sure. And we sent ballots out all over the entire world, and we're very proud of that. The middle person is Ms. Helen Smith. I believe Helen has been with me longer in the elections process than anyone standing up here. Helen is what I call, she is the election warden. She is the one who takes care of all of our coworkers. She finds us good people, she seeks out good people, and she knows the proper place to put them. And I'm thankful I can entrust her with that, because that is one of my least favorite things to do. But she does a fantastic job at that, and she is just an asset to our department. Next to her is Jan. Me and Jan have been together a long time since we were voting on nothing but paper. And we were in that little bitty one room, I call it the one-room shack on the hill. And Jan was back there in a room that looks like a kitchen galley on a ship. You have about three foot between you, and we were issuing ballots left and right, but she did a wonderful job, and she has been an asset too. The next person, very dear to me as well, this is Ms. Felicia Wallman. Felicia came to me at a time when I needed her the most. She is the person who makes all of our voting machines work and our express bowls. That is a job that is, it is a difficult task, because you have to touch every voting machine in this county. You have to test every voting machine in this county before we can allow the public to vote on those machines. And we have to make sure those are right. And she came in and she loved it. She's got it organized. She's just, it was just a blessing to me, because that's another area I'm not real fond of. But the last person, I guess the same, best for last. This is Mr. David Spraybeard. And first and foremost, I'm proud to say he is my friend, and he is a veteran, he has served our country well. He is retired military. And he come in, and he stepped up with Felicia, and he's back there. And don't let it fool you, he may look old, but let me tell you, he's got some guns on him. He is also, he's affectionately known in our office as Super Dave, because he has to work with all of us women. And we, I went to him one time when I was just, you know, stressed out, and he's always saying, it's gonna be okay, it's gonna be okay. But I said, you know, somewhere underneath that shirt, I knew if you ripped your shirt off, then there would be the big Superman ass, so that's why I call him Super Dave. But I have a wonderful staff, and I am just thankful for that. But let's get to the best part of it. And the commissioners want y'all to do a cheer, Dave Carmichael's very happy about that. But I'm here today, because y'all are going to be a part of history for us. And that historical moment was met about two weeks ago. When I came into voter registration by accident, and I will say it is by accident, I had no idea this was where I was gonna end up. And I was just talking to Chris about it, you know, I live and preach that God has a sense of humor. But I love this. You either love elections or you hate elections, but elections will get in your blood. I will say this until I'm no longer the election supervisor, and I hope whoever steps up behind me will continue this on. I've gone to meetings all around the state, and we talk about different issues that happen in the other 158 counties. And I'll say, well, I do so and so, and these other counties will say, you do too much for your voters. But as long as I'm the elections supervisor, it's about the voters. And we will do everything we can to make sure who is eligible gets to vote, because it is about the voter. It's about serving the people of Paulding County. We are servants, and we need to understand that, because, you know, if it wasn't for people like Tony and Dave and all of you out there, I'll get Mr. Tibbetts back there with his little World War II hat on. These guys sacrificed, Tommy Leonard, you know, your sons, I mean, these people sacrificed for that right for us to vote. So as long as I'm here, I'm gonna sacrifice to make sure people can have that privilege of voting. So while I'm here, is when I started in 2004, I started in the first presidential election, and we had 45,000 registered voters in Paulding County. And I would go to these conferences, and I would see the bigger counties, and they have half million, you know, 200,000, and I'm thinking, I'm never gonna be where they are. Then I stand here before you today, and we celebrate that as of two weeks ago, Paulding County reached over 100,000 voters, so. And I want to tell you, as of today, as of this moment, the actual number is 101,268 voters. Paulding County continues to grow. We are doing something right here, people, because people continue to want to make Paulding County their home. I'm proud to be here all my life. I'm proud to have raised my children here. And I'm just proud to be a part, just a small part, of such a wonderful government. So I've talked enough. I want to turn it over to Mr. Harvey, who I hope is gonna say some nice things about us. But I want to say this, I will say this about Chris, he is the state elections director, and he is a person who, when I feel that I'm about to pull my hair out, I can call him, and he encourages me. He's like, no, we're not giving up, we're gonna keep on going. So we all need people like that in our lives. But I want to tell you all, you're all invited, but not until the commissioners come down, because I'm gonna picture with them. We have cake and punch in our office, we're celebrating, so if you all can come down and get a piece of cake and have some punch, we'd love to help you down there. So thank you, myself. Y'all are wonderful, and I appreciate everything you do, so keep up the good work, keep making me look good.
Well, good morning. Again, my name is Chris Harvey, I'm the elections director for Georgia Secretary of State, Brian Kemp. And I come here bearing good wishes from Secretary Kemp. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor to be here in front of this board of commissioners. I don't want to take up much of your time, but I want to make a few comments on some stuff that Deidre said. First of all, I can tell everyone in this room that's a resident of Paulding County that you have a fantastic elections office and a fantastic elections director. And I think you need to be aware of that. Two things strike me about Paulding County and about dealing with Deidre. One is, as she mentioned, the respect that's so evident in Paulding County for veterans, for service people, for public servants. I spent 20 years in law enforcement, mostly in DeKalb County, prior to becoming the state election director. I was the chief investigator for the Secretary of State's office for eight years prior to doing this. And through that time, every time I dealt with Deidre Holden, whether there was a problem, whether there was an issue, her response to me was always, hey, if we've done wrong, we're gonna own up to it, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna make it right. She didn't have to do that very often, because she doesn't, and her staff very rarely do anything wrong. For most people don't realize that, most people, sort of at my level, don't realize that every single vote that's cast and counted is done so at the county level. My job is relatively easy. I get to work with 159 people in 159 counties. And I tell you what, I've never been to a county commission, county government meeting that started like this. This is amazing. The positive familial sense that we're gonna get something done, sense that we're all in something together, is absolutely refreshing to me, and it's fantastic to me to see. So I'm very glad to be here, I'm very happy, you all should be very proud of yourselves. You've got a fantastic elections director, and she's the only one in the state, the only out of 159, the only one that calls me up and says, hey, sugar bud. So I always know that that's Paulding County. And I sometimes have to explain it myself, something in my wife over here, but that's okay. I said, that's Deidre. So again, congratulations on your milestone, please keep up the good work. And if there's ever anything the Secretary of State's office can do for anyone in any capacity, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, and Dave Spraybeard will be praying for you.
I knew all I could get.
I can't help but recognize a veteran out here, Lauren Will, it's so good to see him meeting you. Thanks for being here, Navy veteran. Lot of contributions to Paulding County over there in that seat. So now, the board of commissioners would like to recognize the firefighters, Chris Bevout, Brandon Maple, Robert Eads, for their service during the recent storm in South Georgia. Chief Helfrey is gonna fill us in on them.
Come on, gun. Thank you. Thank y'all for letting them be here this morning. We do have, Robert Eads could not be here, he's out of state right now and couldn't be here. But we wanted to bring them in, and Chairman had talked to me about bringing them in, recognizing them. This is Chris Bevout and Brandon Maple, they were recently deployed to South Georgia on January 22nd, when the storms decimated the several counties down in South Georgia, everybody's aware of that. They're on a team called the Georgia Search and Rescue, which basically is called GSR, meaning you may have heard of it. Let me tell you a little bit about GSR. GSR was established after 9/11, when states realized that they could not respond appropriately to certain events such as 9/11. And so federal government brought down some money through GMA, and GMA was able to fund a GSR group. And they broke up into seven task force. These gentlemen are part of Task Force One. They're trained in about five disciplines, that's the minimum disciplines that it has in that response. They're, it's building, let's see, building collapse training for SBU, am I right? Whatever.
Roads.
Roads, all that. So they're trained very well to do all this, they have an expertise, they train hard, they go accordingly with the state, and they train with the state at these events, and they're able to respond in case something happens. The great thing about that is they bring in all this experience back to Paulding County. God forbid something like that happens in Paulding County, but they're able to bring it back and teach our guys, and they're able to do it. They responded down, like I said, on the 22nd, was down there till the 25th, to the storm stricken area, there were 12 deaths down there. They were assigned to a 200-lock mobile home park to search it. It was, like I said, decimated, just a place in a parking lot with a lot of rubble. And these gentlemen went through a lot of stress, physically and mentally. They were searching, I guess everybody heard, there was a two-year-old child that was missing. Unfortunately, the child still hasn't been found, but they searched the whole trailer park where that child lived. Worked very hard down there, they kept me abreast of everything that was going on down there. So I know they had, they don't come back and tell you this, but I know it's very stressful for them. And they're to be commended for the work they do. They searched through all kinds of rubble, they searched ponds, they searched everywhere they could. They said they cleared parking lots, basically just moved things out of the way on their hands and knees. So it's very hard work, they're trained well to do it. They represent Paulding County very well and the citizens and the department, and I'm very proud of them. I could not be part of GSR, but I cannot grow a fancy mustache like that. If I could, I might try to go out, probably would make me. We appreciate everything you did. It was a fatal disaster, $100 million worth of damage. We are being reimbursed for their time and all of our equipment down there, so we're currently doing all the paperwork, so that's upon us as well. But I just wanted, you guys see them, know that you have some very professional gentlemen and women work here at Paulding County Fire Department, and these two are a fine example. Welcome them all here at Paulding County. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to recognize that Mr. Davison's gonna tell us about a new feature of our website.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited today to be able to announce, one of the things that, this is near and dear to my heart, is what I call proactive transparency from this government. This is a change that doesn't require a vote from this board. I spoke today about it, he liked the idea, and we went to the other commissioners to get input, we got nothing but positive comments on this, so we're implementing the change. Will is working on it with the IT group, it'll be ready for our next meeting. But when we publish our agenda for these meetings online, a lot of times you'll see a line in there, references a resolution. But try it as you may, you won't find a copy of that resolution anywhere. We're gonna change that, we're gonna start publishing the texts of the resolutions that this board will be considering. Keep in mind that it's draft text, so it is subject to change, but we want to be as open with this, as transparent with it as possible, and so we'll be implementing that change for the next meeting. And I'd like to just say thank you to the gentleman on this board, and to Lonnie for her input, but for the support, for making this change, I think it'll be a good thing for people as we open up and do good work for the people in California.
Well, the panel's gonna get the big head up here today, because I wanted to make a final announcement, just to thank the board of commissioners for just above and beyond over the last month since, you know, the end of January, February. Things on Union Park, the 911, finished work out there, we're getting close to being able to move in there. The security here at Watson Complex, the, just going to the staff meetings, being a part of those, and the Water and Safety Advisory Board meetings, they've been involved in the service delivery strategy with the cities. So I just want to tell you, I appreciate you putting in the extra time, it takes a lot of time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Before you leave, the prayer rally is tomorrow, the 15th through the 6th.
Oh, thank you. So I mentioned that the prayer rally was on Thursday, it's tomorrow, the 15th, at noon. Invited guests, we have none, bill of awards today, none, reports from committees and departments. I've spent time with Mr. Pollard on having a mid-year review and get my feet on the ground wherever we were with the budget, and we have plenty of needs around the county, so thank you, Ted, for giving us an apartment update.
Sure, I'm gonna try to be as clear as I can, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask them at any time. I'm gonna cover a good bit of ground, very quickly, if I can. First, I want to let everybody know that we completed the audit, we had 188, or June 30th, complete that, it was completed in December. So if you wanted to see that information, the official financial, the capital, you would go to the 2016 Paulding County Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and here you have about 130 pages of information about the county's finances. In that information, there's a couple of pages that you might find some good information. One is on page, it's Roman numeral four, it's the transmittal letter, and basically it's an introduction that tells you about the finances of the county. And it looks like this. I'm not gonna go through all the details, I mean, everybody's able to read, and it's available to everybody. Don't have access to internet, I'll be more than happy to get it for you. And then following that, we have the audit report, which is the auditor's opinion of the county. And then we have, oh, there it is, there's the independent auditor's report. And then following that, you have management's discussion and analysis. There, you will see some side-by-side information and specifics about the finances of the county. It's good information, if you're interested, if you're not, I guess it puts you slip. But you have some side-by-side, so you can kind of make some comparisons. And then if you go down to... And then, if you go down to, the actual financial reports start here, those are consolidated. Most of the time, when everybody wants to know about finances of the county, they're talking about general fund. Nobody really understands that we have about 20 other funds, but most of the interest is in general fund. So you have a balance sheet for the general fund. Of interest here is the fund balance, because everybody's interested in what is our fund balance, and I have a bigger spreadsheet that we're going to talk about that a little bit in a minute, but that's where you can find the official results. And then, right behind that, schedule, you'll see a statement of revenues and expenditures. Overall, the general fund completed the year with a favorable fund balance of $1.4 million in fiscal year 2016, bringing our fund balance up from the previous year. Those are because growth is coming back, so we're budgeting, most of the time we're budgeting very conservatively to make sure that our anticipation doesn't, isn't greater than what our actual is. We want to be conservative, but we're getting there, it's coming back, it's just a little foot. So I think that's primarily the schedules that most people are interested in. You have quite a few pages of notes, you have, if you wanted to see a budget comparison, you should, following those notes on page 65 and 66, you will see a budget comparison. I apologize for that. I just want you to see what you're looking for. And then, more supplementary information, and it gives you your original budget in the first column, so that's what you adopt in July or August, and then it gives you the final budget, every year we do budget amendments at the end of the year, and then it gives you your actual. The variance is variance with final budget, so it tells you what the difference is. Our budget is classified, we have functions, so you have general government, judicial, public safety, and within each one of those functions is our departments. The budget is, the legal level of control is at the department level, so that department has flexibility of moving some loans around, but anything that goes from one department to the other comes back to you. So that's all I wanted to really show you from there, the primary thing is that we did any of it positively. I'll jump from June 30th of 2016 to December 31st of 2016, this is fiscal year 2017, and that gets very confusing. If I put December 17 on here, a lot of people will say that's not here yet, so it's just hard to follow. I did put some handouts in the back, I don't know if everybody got them, I hope, and if you've gotten them, that maybe you can share. This has December 16, which is this fiscal year, compared to December 15, which is last fiscal year, and it gives you an idea of where I wrote, I realize you can't read that in the back, like I said, I have paper, I hope that everybody can see that, and I have a little bit better presentation, and that'll make that more legible. Then, after you have your general fund, and then you have all the other funds behind that, so you have fire packs, debt service, water sewer, and landfill. So now hopefully you'll be able to see. This is a little better than what you could see the other, and it's got some different information. So, as Commissioner Pollard said, what we've done over the past few weeks is we've gone through and made projections. So, revenues first, our projected, our original budget says revenues were $59.6 million. As of December 31st, 2016, fiscal year 2017, we've collected $4,651,000. Keep in mind, the first half of the year, we're keeping, we're collecting revenue, the last half of the year, we're spending. So, we're not, we're not collecting near as much, we collect heavily the first six months, and we spend pretty much all 12, but we put off as much as we can until after those collections have occurred. So we spend heavier in the second six months. So, right now, we've projected out for 2017 that our revenues are going to exceed projections by $1,792,500. Those are best guesses, I'm going to go through here and tell you a little bit about each one, what is included in that number. Property taxes, those have stayed the same, there's not much change in that. Your other taxes, you have things like title-level loan tax, your intangible real estate, which is generated by the sale of property. The local option sales tax has exceeded revenues by about $100,000, which we used to roll back and millage right next year. Mop beverage and wine taxes have increased, and your insurance premium taxes were received in the fall, and it was received at $290,000 higher than what had been anticipated. Then if you go down to license and permits, your permit fees are increases. Charges for services, you have tax commissioner, the probate judge, clerk of court, they're all charging fees for some of the services that they're providing, those have increased. Included in that $1,792,000 is, was a one-time revenue of $196,276, which was received from SECG, and an investment return from the workers' comp program. So it was a one-time thing, we won't get it again, it was, they had some increased investment earnings, and took in about $5 million, and our share of that was $196,000. So, it helps us, but it's not. The expenditures, when you go through the budget, you have 62, almost 62.5 million in the final budget, you should see that on page 6 of the handout that you have. As of December, we've spent $26.5 million, and going through the projections, we found that we've had quite a few vacant positions, we have quite a few capital out there that haven't occurred, and some of our operational expenses may not have occurred yet, they'll occur after December 31st, so then the second six months, such as actually maintenance on hardware, software, those kinds of things, that are paid annually. It's anticipated that our projected expenses are $61.5. So you should, it looks like as of December 31st, that your expenditures will come in under budget by $1 million. That number will not be right, that number will be wrong, it's a projection, it just gives you an idea of where we are. So, things change, what you can add, what you maybe should take away, it just gives you an idea of how mixed it is. So overall, if our revenues come in at $1.7 million higher, our expenditures come in at $1 million under, then our total difference from original budget will be $2.8 million. And the original budget, if you use the, the original budget, or in the final budget, which includes the original budget and anything that has, the purchase orders that weren't completed last year rolled over, to $2.8 million, with our planned used fund balance, if we receive this $2.8 million, we net the two, and we'll actually use the $10,000, which is very close to breaking. So, things look good right now. And as I mentioned, I want to touch a little bit on the fund balance, because you have a lot of people that don't understand this total fund balance, and then you have this unassigned, and what makes this up. So several years ago, they changed the definition, this non-spendable, non-spendable amount means desertment spend, cash it down, we just haven't received that yet. We budgeted $2,023,000 in the last original budget that was passed in August, and these are, for the most part, purchase orders that were not complete as of the end of the year last year, and this $1.4 million is the set aside or landfill cost of closure, which will occur at some point in the future. But keep in mind, the total cost of that is about anticipated at $3.6 million. So, that's, we don't have enough set aside at this time for that entire cost. The $3 million, $3.6 million will occur over heavily at the beginning and annually for 30 years. Your total fund balance is $48 million. So basically, what I want you to get from all of this is that we're, we do have a fund balance that is fairly large, we do have a little bit of room, we're not strapped, we have a little bit of room to make progression. Your unassigned, which is available, is 41, that's basically what we want to judge our 25, 33% that we have reserved at all times, we don't want to drop below that, is based on the 41 million, not the 48 million, because the others are already allocated to something. And that our revenues are, will exceed what our original budget, because we have other, other taxes that have come in and continue to come in at a higher rate. So, do I leave anything out? You just leave now.
Would you just state for the benefit of the audience what our Board of Commissioners' policy is on percentage of budget needs to be in the fund balance?
Your policy is that you will maintain the 25% of the unassigned fund balance, so that's 25% of this 41, almost 42 million dollars in fund balance. What you would risk if you drop down to 28% is that our, we do collect, property taxes make up about 50% of our revenues, those are received from October to December. So if you have, if you don't have any income coming in, and you don't have anything set aside, you don't have enough to get that 30% of the year complete, you're not going to be able to make bills. So, your payroll, your utilities, you can't do it. So we generally try to go with 30, 30, 35%, but the fund balance policy says 25%, and you have to adopt a policy, if you drop below that, you'll adopt a policy to get it back up to 25%.
I'd just like to say, last year during the budget process, post commissioners, we did a lot of changes and worked on the budget with your help and guidance, and we, with your help and guidance, we felt like we would be in better shape right now than what we had projected, and with the information that you brought us this morning, that shows that. And so I'm very thankful, because I think we went out on some faith, but I think we acted the way we should have acted at the time, and I think we did the things that we needed to do. So with your department's guidance, and Dave, you weren't here at the time before post commissioners here, I just appreciate all y'all that we were able to do what we did, and I think today, what you're showing us and what you've shown us the last couple of weeks is, is a reward for those good efforts spent, so thank you to you and your department, more than you know.
Thanks.
And I know we put a lot on you, and you've always stepped up to the plate, and I appreciate it more than you know.
Thank you. And one last thing, if anybody has anything that maybe wasn't covered today, one of the things that I think we're all trying to work on is some additional questions, so if I can be contacted, email me at tpollard@polk.com with the subject line FAQ, citizens, you, it doesn't matter who, if there's something that you don't know that you would like to know, let me know what that is, so that I can make sure that it's included the next time, or I can reach back home.
And for better communication, we're going to put these FAQs in our newspapers, we've got two represented here in the room, the neighbor of the new area, and also on several different sites, websites, social media sites. I didn't say Ms. Hollings she had to sneak in, but I do see that she's on the list for participation in the necessity, I'll look you later.
Hi, everyone, I just wanted to speak on two different little topics today, and one of them, I'll go with this one for us, and that is the board appointments. You guys, you know, you always make your board appointments and everything, and I appreciate that. It seems sometimes like we keep recycling the same people, but on different boards. You don't get a whole lot of different ideas when you keep recycling the same people. So by saying that, one of the things that I have noticed is, and I think it's time for Polk County to come into the 21st century, is that on the major boards, not one woman has ever been a board member. Women come with a different perspective. If you thought this yesterday, President Trump and the President, Fromenestre, Trudeau of Canada, they had a meeting with entrepreneurial women. Women have a very strong input in the world, and they're very capable. I know of four very capable women right now that you could put on economic development, IBA, water sewer, any of those, that would be outstanding candidates, and I've talked to them personally, and they are all willing to serve. So I think it's time Polk County comes into the 21st century and starts putting a woman on some of these economic and big boards in this county. Second, I want to talk about the position of the administrator. Now, I'm not here to say we don't need an administrator, or I'm not saying we do need an administrator, but here's some quick questions that I have. My phone crashed on me last night, so I have none on my notes, but one of the things is I noticed the salary. I do not think a salary, the salary for administrator should be higher than the commission chairmans. We elect the commission chairman to run our county, he is the chairman of the board, he is the top guy. So I don't believe an administrator, who, I understand we need someone to kind of do some of the everyday stuff to take pressure off of you guys, so that y'all can go out there, promote our county, I understand that. But I also don't think, one of the other things I noticed is on that thing, it said that the duty of administrator would be to oversee and supervise our department heads. Well, I think we have great department heads, and each department is kind of like, if you look at us like if we're the United States, those departments are little states, and they can run themselves. We have great department heads, and I think can run their own selves. And if they have a problem, you know, they might have, if they need help, they have the administrator if you're out and about. But I don't believe that this administrator should be over them and supervising them. And in fact, I really don't believe, this is, of course, like I said, this is all my opinion, that his salary should be higher than any other department head in this county. That's that. And I have one quick little thing that I'd like to say. I'd like to congratulate one of Polk County's own, and a friend of a lot of ours, Stefan Pasatino, who was tapped to be on the White House Council in the White House. So I'm very proud that Polk County has somebody sitting in the White House right now, having our president, so thank you.
Under consent agenda, we have six agenda items today. Number one, appoint David Small to the Air Force Authority to fill the unexpired term of Calvin Thompson, with a term ending December 31st, 2017. Number two, reappoint Ellis Aston to the Air Force Authority with a term ending December 31st, 2018. Number three, appoint Demetrius Waywatch to the Region One Behavioral Health and Development Disciplines Advisory Council with a term ending December 31st, 2019.
Disciplines Advisory Council with a term ending December 31, 2019. Number four, appoint Kathy Carter to the Department of Family and Social Services Board to fill the unexpired term of Jim McMitchell with a term ending June 30, 2020. Number five, the George Pyle request for permanent easement on county-owned property, the South Johnson Street and West Spring Street. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of these consent agenda items on the regular agenda? Full business, discuss action to approve a landfill tipping fee at $50 per ton and change the minimum tons allowed in the current $10 minimum to 400 pounds. This was tabled from November 10, 2016, and then again on December 13, 2016. So you don't look like Tommy Leonard.
I'm here to report, you know, that I have good news, budget's going well, but I'm spending money. You know, we have a landfill that's very expensive, and they cost a lot of money to own, operate, and clothe. At this time, I'm still not ready for y'all to vote on this amendment. I am looking at a two-tiered in-district, out-of-district system like our adjacent counties have, and I'm still working on that rate, on that dollar. I have not moved anything since the 90s, and I'm thinking we need more, because I've got some upcoming expenses that'll be, I mean, million-dollar items in the budget that the landfill budget will have to go up that much. And I need time to finish this report. I'm asking you to table it until March 14. I mean, you mean...
It's my understanding that you were going to meet with a couple of the commissioners that have been...
Iron out the two-tiered system. Yes, sir.
But that hasn't happened yet?
No. I mean, yes, we've met a little, but we have not come to a conclusion on how we're doing the two-tiered in-district, out-of-district, and, you know, have two rates essentially.
Do you have any thoughts on why our parts of your department that deteriorate, the equipment, the facility, why it's not factored in the entire budget for the department?
It sort of is. You sort of... Landfill equipment cares up. Where you run any equipment, it eventually cares up. Running equipment in trash, it cares up even more. My building that we built in the 90s, the 18-inch deep concrete floor is rotten now. We have railroad rails in it for reinforcing, and it's in between the railroad rails. We've got to do something. Our facility's being hit. Our original building was designed for about 100 tons per day. Last year, we saw 150 tons. Last January, we saw 117 tons average. December, we saw 130 tons average. We're seeing more trash than normal, or not normal, because based on, I'm amazed at the trash we see versus our population, says we should see 400 tons a day, and we're seeing 120. So, you know, we do wear and tear on the equipment. You know, most of the stuff lasts less than 10 years. It's just as part of handling trash and pushing on it. You know, we've had some other things enter... You do have a master, solid waste master plan, excuse me, you have a plan. The Board of Commissioners adopted 10 years ago, and then overall, I look and update every five years. That master plan, based on the population, says that we should have two more transfer stations and two more inner landfills. You know, that we don't, we have not. And so I am probably looking on the high side of the rates when I go up, so that I don't necessarily affect the local businesses and the local customers that bring me 400 of them, that bring me trash every Saturday. I'm looking at a discount for some of them. You know, it's always been a policy of the Board of Commissioners to support and keep a landfill, more or less keeps trash out of the woods and dirt road. And most homeowners, you might have a garbage service, but what you don't have is, who's going to haul that couch off that the cat peed in and we can't handle it through 10 years old? You've got that issue, and you've got to get rid of it. And we don't want it on the side of the road. I would rather have a place, and you pay 10 bucks and get rid of it. And that's what I'm currently doing, and I'm still working on dual rate, and I'm asking for aid. And I'm here for aid. And, you know, my commissioners I'm working with, Tony Crowe and Todd Townell, they're assisting me with this dual rate structure. And I welcome any and all of y'all to give me more data before the month out.
Karen, any recommendation on how long it will take on?
Two to four, which will be two more, March 14. Be next.
I think we're going to get it right. I think we will.
All right, let's move into new business, because you get to head that up also. Discuss action to adopt Resolution 17-04 approving property exchange in the granting and accepting of easements with Nature Walk Development Company Incorporated.
You want me to talk, or if you want to talk first? This resolution's actually pretty simple. It has two areas of property that we are swapping, that we have a phrase for, that show their leg or less values. So those are equivalent properties that we're swapping, and it's the four easements that go along with this property swap. This is an intermodal landfill as well. And so it just swaps two areas that we need to cure up a landfill on one side, and then we can swap for the other side.
The nature of property, we're taking on part of the creek that we need better access, and we need to drill some wells, and, you know, per state recommendations, and we're sort of giving up a hilltop to get this creek. We do have issues out there, A. We do have some groundwater contamination issues, but for the most part, we've maintained and kept all that on our property. There is another plan, that's part of my rate increase, coming up. We'll all spend over half a million dollars on this remediation. And so, and part of the remediation is this landfill swap. We've been working with the current landowner and the two landowners before him. We have just not ironed it out till now for the swap.
I agree. We've been working on some form of this from back when Sharon Sharon was here. So it's a long time to get here.
You have a question? So much is called. New business number 10, discuss action to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $75,000 to fund the county administrator and administrative assistant positions. The annual cost of these positions is approximately $215,000, approximately, because of the benefits calculation that go along with them. And that's for Tabitha and I. The county administrator position is just vital, in my opinion. We're the 14th largest county of 159 counties in Georgia, and with the anticipated growth, we're going to end up being, in just 10 or 20 years, the 10th largest county in Georgia. And with the budget, the size we have, and the number of departments that we have, the interface that's required with constitutional officers, with the numerous boards that the chairman is required to be on, to not have an individual that can handle the day-to-day and can work not to totally oversee department heads, but to provide continuity and coordination where multiple department heads are needed, again, is irreplaceable. The chairman can really not represent citizens properly if the day-to-day is required out of the chairman's office. The coordination at the state level, regionally, the state likes to see regional cooperation and activity in mutual counties, particularly bordering counties, in the area of transportation and community development. And you open yourself up to a greater possibility of funding and grants when you're able to represent yourself at the proper places. At the state, to be involved at the Economic Development Department and Department of Community Affairs, and the Department of Transportation, we're not going to progress and be effective and efficient unless we're able to represent ourselves, represent our county in those departments, and I just named three. There's many more. We're going to lose out on opportunities. We're going to lose out on funding that would have funding that would pay the salaries and more if we hire these people, hire the happy individuals, the county administrator and administrative assistant, so that the county administrator is not having to do clerical work and do their own scheduling and other administrative duties. The ARC, Atlanta Regional Council, was in my office last week and yesterday. The district director of the DOT and the area director, engineer of the DOT were in the office. The Northwest Regional, Northwest Georgia Regional Council, 15 Northwest Georgia counties that meet monthly, and that meeting occurs and takes about four hours of time to get to Calvin, Georgia, in two days on Thursday. So these are just some examples of representation that's needed. And without the chairman being able to participate in those, then we're going to lose out. And the only way the chairman can fully participate in those is if there's a county administrator that can handle the day-to-day. I think another very important part about that job is representing the citizens or being available to the citizens, so that if there's a group that wants to come in and talk about a problem in their area or a problem in the county, that individual Anybody you want to comment?
Well, I think there's probably some things we could talk about, and I know we haven't talked about them, so I don't want anybody to think that we haven't been talking. We've been talking about it. I've talked to some employees, and I've talked to citizens, and any time I say that, somebody says, well, we need to name them. But I have talked to quite a few employees and some department heads and citizens concerning I'm still thinking about what's best for us, what's best for our county, what's best for our department heads, and is it a county administrator position? Is it some sort of another position that might be, that might do the same thing, but may be called something a little bit different, but yet something that can get the departments together and work together as a team when you're on... We've got projects coming down the road, six months, two years down the road, and that person, he or she, can get those departments together to make sure that DOT, water, sewer, whether it's something with a new park or anything else, kind of get them together to make sure that everybody's working side by side on it, and we don't leave somebody out. So I think there's a need. I'm just personally not there yet with an answer of what I feel like that need is. But I do think there's a need of some sort, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with that. I do think that if this board decides on a county administrator, I do think it's wise that if we put that out, and we're looking for a county administrator, that that position that we fill as county administrator, that he or she has the opportunity to participate in who they want to be, their secretary or assistant or whatever it is, because in that position, that typically would happen. So I want us just to be aware of that. The board decides different, that's fine, but that's just a view that I have. And that may be the same thing if that position's not a county administrator. It may be a different title. We're talking about, you know, maybe somebody that that person would want to be involved in the interview process, and that person would be not only a secretary, maybe somebody that's good at grant writing. So I just, I think there's a little bit more to talk about it on my end, but I appreciate everything you've been able to talk about the last six weeks. It's been a good six weeks. I appreciate that, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, sir. You know, I don't disagree with anybody who's been saying. I did think one thing we need to consider is look at the job description. I've got a copy of it, Human Resources. Probably needs to be updated and rewritten, and I think we need to go back, reevaluate the actual description position, what he would be responsible for, who he or she would be responsible for. So, you know, I'm not... I think he found me too. But I would like to sit down before we move on.
So I was trying to, I think like Todd mentioned, I can see a need for that type of a position. Lonnie, can you clarify for us? Nancy, how we should ask the question about the reporting structure? My understanding is that the way that everything's set up with our county, the administrator, assuming there's an administrator position filled, reports to the board, and all of the department heads also report directly to the board. Is that correct?
We do not have, we do not have what's called a county administrator form of government, where the administrator would be the CEO, it's still the chairman, and there's nothing in the way that we have it written now that says the department heads cannot speak to or report to or have interaction with commissioners. In the past, what the county administrator had done was supervise or oversee the departments themselves, say in the staff meetings and things, but it still wouldn't have prevented any department head from having interaction with or reporting to or discussing things with a commissioner.
Thank you. The other thing I would ask us maybe to consider is, if it's possible, if we don't approve a budget amendment, but yet, but pursue, as Vernon mentioned, rewriting the job description, clarifying things, and post the job, can we post the job before the board has approved the budget amendment?
Before the money?
Before, in this case, yes, Brian, person of that, when we post the job, don't we ordinarily post the salary range? So we need to have that, in the very least. I don't know that you have to approve the amendment, but you have to... If you're going to post the job, there's a salary range, and you post with the description. He's nodding.
Karen, do you have a...
Not this time. Just taking up chocolate.
And Tabitha went through the budget there and hit on the increase in fund balance that we may overlap. Well, six months, we're really six weeks ahead of that now, six weeks into this year. But that information, you know, it's on the reading material that he got that I was talking with, from the finance director. So I've been working off basically a one and a half million dollars increase, where not only this position, that's just a goal number one, because, you know, it's a 16-hour day jobs right now. And so there will be goal number two, and goal number three, and goal number four, if we want to talk about additional things that can be done in the county without going into the 2018 budget, and therefore, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, if we slide the money into 2018, and then we use it in the 18 budget, and it... the money into 2018 and then we use it in the, in the 18 budget, and it shows that it's a tax increase because of the amount of money, then it's a tax increase. If we spend it this year, it's just money that is available this year?
Well, the tax increase is based on property taxes. That's separate from what we talked about today, than the 1.7. The 1.7 is from title levels, from your interest premium, is from your intangibles, from your real estate, is from charges for services, is from the permit fees. So, that, while you do talk about those things at the same time, they're kind of separate. No, it doesn't, it's not part of the advertising process to advertise that you're gonna have a tax increase. However, it would have, you would have additional revenues. What I gave you today is what I expect. You have your original budget, and then you have what we expect to receive between now and by June 30th, what will that budget look like? It was at 59.6 million dollars going into the year, and with some of those areas that I mentioned increasing, you should end about 61.4 million dollars. And as your budgeted expenditures, which given you had some vacant positions, you have several things that haven't occurred yet, that number will fluctuate some from that million dollars. So, but as of December 31, anticipation is that your budget will come in under budget by a million dollars, giving you the 2.8. So, I don't know if I clarified that or not, but it's, it, yes, you do have some increase in other taxes, but your tax increase add, if that's what we're talking about, is not related to anything I talked about today, and it's, it's more of a military based on the digest.
The, the main job of the county administrator off our job description is to enforce, to carry out the policies of this board, the board commissioners. That's the main reason that position being there. Some of you are more or less familiar with ACCG, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, which is where we receive a special training about how county government works and receive certifications. The ACCG, another function that they have is to put out information on the county makeup of the 159 counties. So, information from them, again, all the panel here is seeing the information from David Wells, the manager, I forget what his full title is, but he, he puts out a lot of good information, and 123 of 149 counties in Georgia have a county manager, a county manager slash administrator, like lines depending on what type of government we've set up. The, as far as the administrative assistant goes, of the surveys that were sent out to the counties that had county managers, 110 or 91% responded that the, to have a directly supported administrative assistant was necessary. So, again, the, the board of commissioners, we all have the same information that comes from ACCG, so just wanted to throw that in.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, again, I don't disagree with anything you said or anything that's up here today. I do think we need to tweak the position in the job description. I'd like to see in there that it would make it real evident that every department head can still talk to each commissioner. And in the past, I know sometimes it's been said, hey, you know, come to me, don't go to the commissioner. I don't feel that way. Like, I was related to deal with my constituents and to deal with the department heads, and I don't have any problems with that. So, I think it needs tweaking, but I do agree with some, everything's been said.
Dave, I'd like to echo what Todd had mentioned about the administrative assistant This is something the board wants to move forward with, like to maybe consider the administrative position and then return to review on the secretary position or the administrative assistant role, whatever that role ends up being, so that the person hired as the administrator can have full input and interaction with the hiring of the person who would be his or her assistant.
Okay. Do we need to amend or revise the business item number two, just to reflect the county administrator position, or is that just kind of a motion this afternoon?
You could, you could revise it to say only the county administrator, you could include both positions, you could include none, yeah, there's a table, I mean, there's a whole round of things that you actually could do. So, yes, you could revise it this afternoon, but it's for it to only be one position of the two that are listed right now. But there's still a whole host of other things you could do as well.
Well, we've got a few hours to discuss.
Mr. Chair, you and I have not sat down and talked about this, goal number one, and I, I would like to have that opportunity to discuss with you, maybe running around just a little bit more. I realize your position, certainly, you work in a role, I know that, and I realize you're gonna need some time. But before we make a decision on this, I would like to sit down and you and I talk about, and I don't think, go in and tell Tane on this, and we can do that, or have a, you guys wanna do it, but I'd like to.
What are you doing, George?
Well, I'd like to just, I think, I think all the points brought up are great. And Dave, I really do truly mean, last, last six weeks have been very good, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I've been here six years, and my seventh year, the last six weeks have been great. So, I wanna tell you that. I think there's a little bit more discussions that can help, and I know that when you talk about it, you go around the table, and at the end of the day, I think if we put the effort we need into it, it will come out with a finished product of what we're all content and happy with. Maybe we don't all get everything we want, but we all get a lot of what we want. And then, I'd like to talk to a few more department heads about it, and I know that it's busy for you. It gets busy for us, too. Scott over there, he's, he says 16-hour days, he says there's 24 hours in the day, he says, y'all keep him and keep him. Scott. But I just want us to, let's talk about it a little bit more, and we're six weeks into this year, and, you know, we talk trash, we table trash for a few times. I think we can, I think we can get through something and get something that we can all, all agree on. And I don't, I don't at all want you to think that, myself, and I don't believe any of the other commissioners that have shared anything, I don't believe none of us are wanting to say, no, Dave, we don't wanna discuss it. We're just saying, hey, let's take a little bit more time, do a little bit more information, see if we can come up with something that everybody, department heads and everybody, can, can deal with, and I, I think we can. I think we'll work on it, get it done.
So, it sounds like the motion will be tabling, or again, kind of being another two weeks or four weeks?
We're pretty good at tabling things.
I, I would really like to reiterate this. I truly believe that this position can pay its own salary by the opportunities gained through having two people that are representing the county in every place that it needs to be represented. And, you know, it becomes a neutral hire, and that's him. Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, conclusion of regular business, there's no executive session. There's, no one is asked to speak on non-agenda items, so would there be a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
The adjourners are second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Valentine meeting is adjourned.